So Mike.
Good, good to see you. I did.
Yep.
I wish I could roll by like that. You, me and America. We're all in the same ward. Even after they redrew the lines and stuff. Yeah. So I get smaller.
On the countdown. Did she start the recording? The recording's gonna start. Okay, council, it is seven o'clock. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Hey, up next we have roll call. Okay, Ms. Susanna.
All councilors are present. A quorum has been declared.
Thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approval. Councilor V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Susanna?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda, we have citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda to where if we have any one who wants to make any comments, they do so by turning in the cards to upfront to Ms. Susanna. And I have one card here today from John Adams.
Good evening, council. John Adams. I live at two oh nine Alamosa Avenue. Been in the city of Alamosa for eleven years, and I've served on various committees. And I am a current member of the planning commission for Ward Three. And with that, I would like to announce officially that I would be seeking the Ward Three seat for city council. And I just look forward to finding ways to affect small change within the city. And just be and continue to be an active member within the city of Alamosa. And I look forward to looking, look forward to working with you again in the future.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so now what we're going to do, since I don't have any more comment cards, I'm gonna go to the Zoom participants to see if we have any participants that are on Zoom who would like to make any comments at this time. If you are, I'll have Ms. Susanna explain to you how to raise your hand so we can recognize you and allow you an opportunity to make some comments at this time. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. We have a clock here. If you're still talking at the three minute mark, I will politely ask you to end the conversation at that time. Ms. Susanna?
People wishing to speak must use the raise your hand feature and star nine to raise your hand if you're on the telephone.
Okay. I don't see any hands raised at this time, so we'll go ahead and close the citizen comments. And usually whenever we have an elected official in our presence, we'd like to acknowledge the elected official. We're fortunate tonight to have Senator Cleve Simpson joining us today. So thank you so much for joining us tonight, Senator. Appreciate seeing you. You're welcome. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda is the consent counter A, Councilor Grego.
I'll make motion to approve consent counter A.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Susanna. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Regular business, business brought forward by city staff, development services, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three.
And Deacon, before you start, I just, I wanted to state towards the beginning of the meeting, we have been getting comments from individuals trying to watch through the Zoom that if you're not talking into the microphone, both for people at the podium, for staff, for council, that it's very hard to read. And so it's been some fairly consistent comments. I just want to make sure everyone speaks as much as possible into the microphone. So those of us, those joining us through Zoom are able to hear.
Thank you for that friendly reminder, Ms. Brooks. Appreciate it. Okay.
Good evening. Thank you. So ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty-three, we went through it last time. There's been no substantial changes, actually no changes at all. We've got seven different code amendments. Most of them pertain to uses. Some of them are adding some processes. Some of them are just housekeeping. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't see any lights on for any questions, so what we'll do is open up the public hearing for ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to come and make any comments in regards to this ordinance, please feel free to come up to the podium and voice your concerns. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience, so we'll open it up for the Zoom participants. Ms. Susanna, if you could give them instructions on how to raise their hand.
People wishing to speak must use the raise your hand feature or star nine if you're on the telephone.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council, council, Councilor V. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number fifteen dash twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a reminder to council that I'm abstaining from this vote because of a conflict of interest with my place of employment.
Okay. Alrighty, so please start voting.
The motion carried unanimous unanimously with Councilor Daniel abstaining from the vote.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, under finance, resolution number fourteen twenty twenty-three. First budget amendment for twenty twenty-three annual budget.
Thank you, Mayor. With this being our first budget amendment for the year and Leanne still being somewhat new, I'll be doing this, but she is here for any questions. So this, this, we are eight months into the year, so this is a fairly lengthy budget amendment. But I would say that there are not really any surprises. It's a lot of what you see every year in the first budget amendment, which is any projects that we didn't finish in the previous year. We're carrying those over as well as if we've received grants or different things like that. But I will quickly go through the attached resolution. We are adjusting our general fund revenue. It does kind of look a little large, but I want to explain why we do think twenty twenty-three will end higher than what we projected going into it. When I looked at our budget notes for twenty twenty-two, way back in August and September when we're doing it, our sales tax was actually trending to where we might have been trending down to close out twenty twenty-two. So we had a pretty conservative twenty twenty-three revenue projection. And we actually ended up closing out twenty twenty-two a little bit higher, and we're trending okay for twenty twenty-three. So nothing to necessarily write home about, but it's something that we wanted to go ahead and adjust what those revenue projections are for twenty twenty-three. And so those are two of the first items. Our downtown parking grant for four hundred and twenty-six thousand. We needed to decrease. We previously thought we were gonna use ARPA for the entire co-responder program, but since we got a federal grant that dramatically reduced it down, and we can't use ARPA to match a federal grant, so we'll need to figure that situation out. On the other side, though, transferring in ARPA for development services to offset the development services director's position, the DOJ cores co-responder grant for a hundred and eighty-three, another ARPA allocation for the project manager position that we discussed with city council. Insurance proceeds, unfortunately, for a totaled police department vehicle. Grant for noxious weeds, a grant for the Dole Boyd housing project, another grant for the housing Boyd project. The transfer from a capital improvement for the fire department radios, the SLV Fed donation for a K-nine. The fire department sold a trailer. Fire department also had the state buy back some of their foam. The IT received a grant for the rec center security cameras, pass through of the JAG grant. Friday Health did pay that first portion of our contract, which was ninety-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight. Carryover of the twenty twenty-two levy project, so we didn't expend those funds in twenty twenty-two, so we need to carry it over. And we are beginning the engineering process now. And then ARPA for the twenty twenty-two housing project of fifty thousand to carry that over. Enterprise Fund, we got a mineral impact grant for the water well generators. We got a Dole Planning Grant for the master utility infrastructure, a Dole Grant for the wastewater lift stations. We needed to correct the Rio Grande Water Conservation District contract. We had duplicated it, so we needed to take that out and correct it. And then we got a grant for the center lift station. Community recreation. And we rolled over the RACE grant from twenty twenty-two. The Gen Wild twenty twenty-two grant was deferred revenue. We need to recognize it. Donations for Special Olympics. Another grant for the green space fuel reduction, SLV youth donations to youth hockey, and another grant for the Colorado Tree Coalition. So you can see a lot of this is related to ARPA stuff we had discussed with you and/or grants and carryover of those types of things. Getting into then the expenditures, I'm not gonna go through every single one of these, but there is a lot that are related to line items being cut for us to be able to afford those street salary increases. And so you're gonna see a lot of little items, five hundred here, a thousand there. We covered that in a work session, so I'm gonna kind of skip over those. I'm gonna skip over the ones that are related to the grants that we talked about up above type of thing. We did need to adjust for the city clerk, the leadership training that kind of carried over due to some timing. Line item cut, line item cut. We did need to increase our employee rewards program. It's sometimes we have more hitting the five, ten, fifteen, twenty year anniversaries than than other years, and so we needed to adjust that. We carry over every year the Artscape funding that we didn't spend the previous year, so we always carry that over. To then maybe council will have funding to be able to buy an art piece at the end of the year. So we carried that over. We did have to replace the PD rooftop HVAC unit. So I'm just gonna skip down. I'm looking at IT. We inadvertently left out the salary for a part-time internship of three thousand, so we are putting that back in just for this year. Again, grants, salary cuts for the street salaries, purchasing the K-nine. The state dispatching fee under police did come in a little bit higher, so that needed to be adjusted by seven thousand. I'm scrolling through. I'm now onto fire. So I think it's been clear with our new chief that his number one emphasis is on training and really making sure there's a lot of depth in the fire department. And so while we sold a trailer and the state purchased some of that foam, he was turning around and putting that into training. So those items are offsetting, so we can get some additional training. We also needed to get radios, but we had been saving up for that, so it's just transferring it in from that savings account in the capital reserve to pay for the radios. And then as we discussed with council, we did do a little bit of some costs in allotted little areas to reorganize that fire department to make it to where drivers are getting compensated a little different as well as having two assistants. So we made those changes. Eight thousand for increased property abatement costs. That's as we're working with different dilapidated properties, needing to shore up the Walsh Building until it gets demolished, those types of things. The co-responder match, so we talked about that. We were having to move some things around since you can't use ARPA to match a federal grant. Under development services, those are related to the grants that we've already covered. PW admin is the addition of that new construction manager position. So it's adding that in. Under streets, we do have the street lighting. This is so odd, when you, when we have these work sessions at this point, two years ago, when we had the street lighting work session, it's taken that long to kind of get the thing through the system for Excel and get the stuff ordered and all of that. So it's, it's what a council authorized those streetlights at a few of those blocks, and so we're finally able to to get those things put in there. Skipping down. It's grants and street salary increase cuts. So for water, there's a portion of the construction manager position that pays for that salary, so that's being put in there. Carrying over of the Ford F-one-fifty, there's grants. Looking at the front nine water source, the infrastructure plan augmentation was accidentally left out, that six hundred and seventy-two. So it was in twenty twenty-two. It was not in twenty twenty-three, so it needs to be, so we're carrying that over. A lot of carryovers of projects that did not get done in twenty twenty-two, so that's what the CO means. So the purchase of a skid steer, the Foster Lift Station, the West Seventh Street Lift Station, removal bio solids in the center lift station. So a lot of those are also being offset by grants in addition to being carryovers. The sewer, you will see the salary adjustment for its portion of the new construction manager position. I'm sorry, okay. Community rec funds, all of those are, look like they're either carryover or the grants and donations that we covered up above. The golf course pump went kaput. That's the technical term. So we had no choice. We had to replace it, so that was an unanticipated expense, but it was somewhat of an emergency because the course was open and we needed to get water to it. So that was an emergency. We needed to transfer to enterprise for water augmentation and the storage leases. Oh, so those are revenues. These are the expenses. And with that, that is a quick and dirty summary of of the different changes in this budget amendment. And Leanne and I are both here, as well as every department head, to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Councilor Grego?
I had a couple of questions. First off, on the fire, you said you sold the trailer. Where did you sell the trailer to?
I, yeah, Bill, if you could come up to the podium.
Well, council, we sold the trailer. It was a a compression trailer, air cylinder trailer within, with the actual trailer to a person in Provo, Utah. And what we found out is, first of all, we acquired the trailer through sheriff's department. It was a a free grant with the nine eleven money years ago. And over time, that particular compressor for that trailer will not put in the amount of pressure that we need for our cylinders. So although it had use for perhaps somebody outside of the fire department, it really wasn't applicable to our department and our air cylinders that contain like forty-five hundred PSI, they would only fill to a lesser amount. And it was kind of antiquated, and because we don't utilize that trailer much when training or anything, we decided to sell that.
And the reason I bring this up, Chief, is in the past, we've got a lot of small fire departments throughout the six county valley, you know. And when we have, we're able to buy some good equipment. Sometimes when, when we, when we ready to get rid of it or get, they're still in good condition. You know, I've always said, hey, let's look at these other departments and see if we can, if we can help them out, you know, and then maybe not even sell it to you know, the more equipment and the better equipped small fire departments you have out there, the better if we have a fireway where we need our neighbors to help us. You know, though they're equipped. I know that we've gone through some equipment and stuff and I, I must always say, hey, you know, there is a possibility of even giving that equipment over, you know. Because a lot of times we get that equipment with rants and stuff like that. We, you know, we very rarely come up and pay full price for equipment like that. I like to see like that, and I know the city manager expects differently, but I think we should look at that all the time.
I will say that was looked into, and they also use those same type cylinders that because of the, the oldness of this compressor, it would not fulfill their needs as well. But we do have a stockpile of equipment at station two that we do look forward to gifting to neighboring departments because quite honestly, you're only as strong as your weakest link, and when they're stronger, it just makes all of us, because quite often we depend upon each other for assistance.
So, so the policy is we take a look at, from a competitive perspective, how much it can bring in. And then if it starts to get lower, then it starts to get more in line and balance out of donating it to another entity. But if it's something that we can get twenty thousand, fifty thousand to offset another capital purchase, then that's when we obviously do the competitive part. But this trailer at six thousand, it's probably one, if it would have worked for a different department, could have made sense for a donation. But so we, we got a balancing act there to where it's our taxpayers and and offsetting future capital projects that we're gonna have to do versus when you get lower to around ten thousand or less, does it make more sense to do a donation type of thing?
And I urge maybe council to look at that policy and make some changes, because when you say taxpayer, the taxpayers, La Jara, Rio Grande County, all these people come here and spend their taxes here, you know, spend their money, which helps us. So that's something I think, and I know that trailer, thank you for the explanation on the trailer, but it's something like that, but I appreciate your, your the way you're gonna handle some stuff in the future. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grego. Councilor Cribs?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a really quick question about one of the pass-through items. Under revenue, under the community rec fund, the Special Olympics revenue was thirty-five hundred. Under expense, it's forty-five hundred.
Andy or Leanne would need to answer this one for me. Special Olympics. Under community recreation.
I noticed that too, but I think the explanation is that we would, when we took on Special Olympics, we planned on dedicating regular operating funds toward it. So we didn't stipulate donations have to equal expenses to operate this program, just as many programs are subsidized recreationally in the city. Special Olympics would be no exception.
So that thousand is just the other cost associated with it that's not covered by the revenue?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, it could be. I'm, I have to dig deep into budgets, but it, those numbers don't have to equal because we were willing to take it on not just on a donation basis as part of operating.
So we'll double check and make sure it's not a typo and that it really is that we spent a thousand more than what the thirty-five hundred donation was.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor V. Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is in regards to enterprise fund expenditures. There's a lot of carryover. Just help me understand, so like West Seventh Lift Station, Foster Lift Station, that money was carried over and the project hasn't been done yet, or?
So part of the projects started as far as from an engineering and design, but because of the timing of grants, the timing of needing to submit it to the state and how long it takes for a state to review it and provide approval of it, delayed some of the construction and then getting parts. And so I know for center lift station, one of the parts was ordered around January. We may get it at the end of October. Am I answering this correctly? Harry, if you want to come up and provide anything else. That's correct.
So then, so then can we assume that a lot of this will be carried over into next year as well?
Center lift, if we can get the part for center lift station, the construction's almost done. We just need to get that part. And I think West Seventh is expected to be done this year with Fourteenth next year. Is that correct?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Councilor Carson?
So I just have kind of a basic question. In regards to some of the vehicles that we purchased, I saw that the F-one-fifty's a electric vehicle.
Yes, sir.
Did that, that would, that came in under the fifty-one thousand dollars? You guys actually were able to do that? I saw, I mean, it was a flat number, but I'm just kind of shocked at that, that you guys were able to get it for that price. That's great if so, you know what I mean? I'm just wanna, I'm just kind of shocked that, thought they were quite a bit more.
That is actually what we paid for the vehicle.
Really?
Yeah.
And so how is it, can, are we gonna get kind of reports on how it's doing on the prospect of whether you're gonna buy any more fleet vehicles that are electric and and some? How it's doing on the prospect of whether you're gonna buy any more fleet vehicles that are electric and and some longevity? Because I'd like to see some of that data after after some time that you have it.
Yeah, we're working with, uh, Excel as a program right now where they have a third party who. Has implemented a a data collection plan, so Andy and I have been putting together a list of vehicles. Um, and what they'll do is they'll send an instrument that we plug into identified current fleet vehicles. And what that's gonna do is data collect, so what we're doing is trying to run them, you know, in the warmer season, it'll be a six-month, uh. Uh, process where we'll run them through the summer into the winter, so it has, uh. Information for both the warmer season and the and then the colder seasons, and with that, what it'll do is it'll kind of identify what type of vehicles and what type of uses. Could be future candidates for P V vehicles, yeah.
Good, all right, that's awesome, that's what I was wondering if we were gonna do with that, so. Okay, thank you very much, and good goodbye, that's a good price.
Thank you. Okay. Councilor Beal.
Mayor, I'm, um, I move that we approve Resolution Number fourteen dash twenty twenty-three, first budget amendment for twenty twenty-three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion, if not, start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, all right, moving right along, that brings us to the next item. Under City Clerk Municipal Court, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number fourteen twenty twenty-three, and ordinance approving an intergovernmental. Agreement with Alamosa County, uh, for conduct of the November seventh, twenty twenty-three coordinated election.
This ordinance is for the I G A to conduct the coordinated election on November seventh, twenty twenty-three with Alamosa County. The terms of the I G A are the same as in past elections.
Okay, uh, councilor, uh, okay. So we'll go ahead and, um, open up the public hearing for ordinance number fourteen, uh, twenty twenty-three. We have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments regarding this ordinance, please come up to the podium and voice your concern. Okay, we don't see anyone in the audience coming up, so we'll go ahead and go to Zoom. And if you could, Ms. Susanna, give instructions to the Zoom participants to let them know how to raise their hand. To be recognized, just in case they would like to make any comments during this public hearing.
Okay, if you wish to speak, you must use the raise your hand feature or star nine to raise your hand if you're on the telephone.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council, uh, Councilor Beal.
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number fourteen dash twenty twenty-three.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you so very much, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, second reading and public hearing for ordinance number twelve twenty-three. An ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement between and amongst the counties and municipalities of the San Luis Valley to protect water resources.
Mayor, if council is agreeable, I would suggest that we run the public hearing for ordinance number twelve twenty twenty-three. And for ordinance number thirteen twenty twenty-three concurrently, because they both. Have the same kind of factual background and consider the same topics, and then when council closes that. Concurrent or joint public hearing, you can deal with the two issues separately. But I I would suggest that just for efficiency, we we combine those public hearings, so if that's agreeable to council, I would ask you to open a. Public hearing on both of those ordinances at the same time.
Okay, thank you, um, at this time, I would like to open up a public hearing for the ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty-three. As well as ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to either of these two, please come up to the podium.
And and if if I could, Mayor, let me just give a brief, uh, staff background on what we're looking at. Uh, before the the public starts to comment, I see Ms. Stober is ready to comment, but.
Sure.
Uh, let me just, just, uh, as background, this is the second reading and we discussed this, uh, to some degree. During our first reading, but what is before you are two ordinances, one dealing with an intergovernmental agreement that has been. Spearheaded by the C O G, by the Council of Governments. That will try to get all of the local governments in the San Luis Valley on the same page. With respect to what are known as ten forty-one regulations, um, and ten forty-one regulations. Are a statutory provision that allows local governments to adopt regulations concerning areas and activities. Of state interest that have a a broader reach than might locally be the case. Um, there are in fact specific topics that the statute sets out that are subject, po- possible subject matters. Of areas and of an area and activity designation, and so ordinance number thirteen. Is actually considering. What you want to identify as an area of state interest, if you do, and it suggests the San Luis Valley, consistent with. The template proposal from the the C O G process. And then it also suggests that there there be two activities of state interest within that area of state interest, again, consistent with. The C O G template, and those are site selection and construction of major new domestic water systems. And major extension of existing domestic water systems, that's number one. Number two, efficient utilization of municipal and industrial water projects. So tho- that's the topic of ordinances number twelve and thirteen, the I G A. And the designation of areas and activities of state interest, and unless you have questions for me, I think it's appropriate to take comments from the public.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the explanation, we'll go ahead and take comments from the public, Ms. Sarah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, appreciate the moment to share with you this evening. And, um, just quickly wanted to, um, give a very brief. Support of this work in terms of why it, the the export of water is such a hot topic, as you know. Residential Water Resources tried to, um, navigate through our water system and. Um, let's not say borrow water, but export water from the valley, as you know. Agriculture, uh, production is a huge driver, it is the huge. It's the biggest driver in our economy here in the valley. Um, the four areas of ag production that rank among the top ten for economic output in the valley. Are potatoes, alfalfa, barley, and beef cattle. Combined, the four sectors generate four hundred and ninety point six million dollars annually to the local economy. So without having control or an added layer of protection to keep our water from. Being exported from outside of our region, um, it seems necessary to add this layer. For us to protect such a vital part of our economy, so just wanted to. Add a little bit of background in terms of why the water staying in the valley is so important, and thank. Um, Councilman Carson and Eric, especially both of you guys for. Working through the long hours of discussion and questions, uh, for this work, thank you.
Thank you. Senator.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, it's a privilege, uh, honor and a privilege to be here tonight and. Offer my support of the two ordinances, and to be clear, I'm here in my capacity as the senator for Senate District Six, which includes. All six counties in the San Luis Valley. Um, uniquely also the general manager of the Rio Grande Water Conservation District, but that board hasn't taken a position yet, so I'm speaking in my capacity as a. Senator and a constituent of the valley. And really just, uh, kind of a, you know, to engage with the council about, um, the pressure. On our water resources, just, it just continues to grow exponentially. We got a little bit of a repeat reprieve this year with a, uh, finally a better than, uh, average, uh, water year. Um, and the aquifer systems and the water users have, you know, experienced a little better year, slightly better than the last twenty. But I can tell you, even even today with, uh, the report that we generate every month, the aquifer lost, lost, uh, capacity this month. And so we're still struggling in that space, and the conversations about export of water haven't rescinded. Um, the folks at Renewable Water Resources weren't successful in convincing Douglas County to. Expense their ARPA dollars to support their project. But recently, they've been active, the principals for Renewable Water Resources were donating exorbitant amounts of money to. In to campaigns for board positions on the Parker Water and Sanitation District Board, I mean, ten thousand dollars. For a water and sanitation board seat, for perspective, my campaign, the most I can accept is four hundred and fifty dollars. So it, I I mean, then Douglas County is also considering moving forward, I'm not sure where this is in the process, but developing a. A a water commission to study their their demands and potential solutions. And one of the principles at Renewable Water Resources is lobbying to be on that commission. Has no experience in water and just realize again, um, the conversation's not gonna go away. Those of us that have lived here for a long time recognize, we do this conversation about exporting water out of here. A- almost like clockwork every decade, in the seventies, it was the San Marcos Pipeline, in the eighties, it was. American Water Development Incorporated, in the nineties, it was Stockman's Water, then it was Sustainable Water, and now it's Renewable Water, these. These threats don't go away, um, and as Sarah pointed out, this is such a vital. Resource to our community, to our livelihood, to our well-being, I I routinely talk about. The culture, the economy, our communities were built around irrigated agriculture, you know, a hundred years ago. And it's a challenge for all of us in that space that we don't have the same water supply today that we had a hundred years ago when when we built these communities in our economy, so. We're stretched pretty thin, we're challenged, um, I think this is a unique oper- opportunity to come together. Um, routinely, we do this when when the threats, um, really present themselves, and we galvanize as a community. In this space to go, we we protect what's really near and dear to our hearts, and that's our our communities that are really centered around around water, so. This, um, is a really unique, um, intergovernmental agreement. And I honestly, I was in session when most of the conversations were happening about crafting it, so I've just only been involved in the periphery. But I have other counties contacting me across the state going, what are you, what are you guys doing? And and we might have a need for something similar, so this kind of cooperative agreement. Where we all share a a mutual, uh, mutual interest and we have mutual, um, risks involved, so I think it's really timely. Um, I think it's unique and and I'm supportive, it's, again, it's it's a brand new concept, I don't believe anybody else in the state of Colorado is doing this, so. You know, I'm I'm cautious about how we move this forward and trying to be thoughtful about any potential unintended consequences, and for me. Um, that's really about how our our communities and our groundwater sub-districts of the Rio Grande Water Conservation District, trying to make sure. Um, there's not conflict or potential, uh, hindrance in how we're trying to accomplish the goals that we're we're tasked statutorily to to accomplish, so. Um, I rise in support of of the ordinance and encourage your, uh, support.
Okay, thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Senator Simpson. Okay, so we don't have anyone else in the, oh, sorry.
Well, that's a a good question, if it's public or not, but we'll call it public, okay, good evening, council. Uh, Mayor, uh, those are tough acts to follow, but just thinking about quality of life and recreation side. And in in support of of this, these ordinances and how central water is to our own, um, ranch operation. Right, and and a lot of our job is balancing conservation and responsible rec development, and. You know, we're diverting water to create habitat, but then you think of all the rec water uses from golf to fishing to paddle boarding to the Ice Festival races on the frozen pond. That we are managing and how central that is to our quality of life and, um, well, high quality of life, I'd like to think. But so, you know, ag and economy, obviously, so important, but also sometimes is overlooked how central it is to everything we're doing and our growing. Outdoor recreation economy, so, um, just a little note on that, it's a side note, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, all right, now this time I don't see anyone else walking up to the podium, so we're gonna go ahead and go to the Zoom. Um, and Ms. Suzanne, if you could give instructions of how to raise your hand for those who are on the Zoom, before we bring you back to council.
Sure, people wishing to speak must use the raise your hand feature. Or dial star nine to raise your hand if you're on the telephone.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and close the public, uh, hearing for. Uh, both ordinances, bring it back to city council for any additional comments, and then. Remember, whoever makes the motion, make sure we do each motion separately, am I right in saying that? Okay, um, okay, I'm not for sure who was first, okay, uh, Councilor Hensley.
So I just, um, I a hundred percent support this, and I guess what I would say is we always need to stay diligent. Um, in regards to protecting our water, um, even things that may not even look like it'll affect it, so for example, Governor Polis's bill two thirteen. That was all about the housing and mandates, and what would have happened if that had gone through is then there would have been. Areas that actually have not been able to build right now because they don't have the infrastructure water-wise, they would have been forced to build. And then that would have caused then some pressure on how to get that water, so I think we also, I guess what I would just say is a. To keep re- remembering, because I know Polis isn't, there's gonna be more coming up in this next year, is that we need to remember this. That sometimes something that isn't even talking directly about water, what are the repercussions?
Thank you, Councilor Carson.
Thank you, Councilor Hensley, that was a really good point, that, you know, in that case, the threat would have come from the state itself and, um, and in and other parties by default, or, you know, by association, so. Uh, you know, I don't have, um, I don't have many comments besides the fact that, or the comment that we are a united community, the San Luis Valley. You know, always, we we come together, uh, through struggles, through fights and and through through these. Um, water grabs that they've tried over the last forty years, like Senator Simpson said, the the valley has come together and and fought them off. Um, unfortunately, this particular one, um, from the, from that private entity is still not going away, and tools like this are important. I hope we never have to use them, but again, they're extremely important and, you know, water's paramount, so. I would move at this time that we pass ordinance fourteen thirty, uh, fourteen twenty-three and adopt the I G A with Alamosa County, oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong one, well, I move, I move that we adopt the I G A. That's first motion, so I'll go ahead with that.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, okay, Councilor Carson.
I would move that we approve ordinance thirteen dash twenty-three, second.
Our motion and a second, any further discussion? I want to thank, uh, Senator Simpson for representing, uh, not only Alamosa, but the San Luis Valley and the other counties that you represent and being that voice for us. Um, and send around the table to make sure that those water concerns are heard, and, um, Ms. Stober, thank you as well for the local efforts that you provide here for as well, so, thank you. All right, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Carson, alrighty, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. We knocked out two birds with one stone there, so with committee reports. Any committee reports, Councilor Hensley?
Uh, so I had two different ones, so last week I was at marketing board, um. I, the parking lot is almost done, so the R V parking lot, uh, they're finishing up some landscaping, things like that, so we're close to being done as well. Um, uh, we also worked on the budget and. Everything's going really well, so I don't not put any fear, but we are going, um, with being a little conservative with the twenty-four budget, uh. Hotel stays have definitely gone down, but we don't feel it as much because the cost to stay in a hotel has gone, is definitely quite a bit higher. to stay in a hotel has gone, is definitely quite a bit higher. But at the same time, um, COVID for tourism for Alamosa actually really was very strong. It was the strongest couple of years. So we're looking at it being more similar to what it was pre-COVID, uh, which is still very good, but obviously then um just having a fairly flat budget. So just giving a feedback on that. Um, and then Tuesday, I was at the uh Main Street uh Advisory Committee. And um, one of the things is uh that came up, and I'm sure maybe Heather might be bringing up as well, but the Walsh is still looking for an October demolition. Um, and the San Juan lighting that's been discussed should be uh done by Homecoming, which is September twenty-third, I think. So hopefully done in time for that. Um, and Chamber uh was talking about their first mural. It's gonna be the back of the JCPenney Del Mar Building. Um, it'll be done in the spring and Erin explained it and I started to write notes and I couldn't even write the notes because she ta- the way she described it, it was honestly so elaborate. It's it sounded super exciting, like every time you would look at it, you would see something else in it. So that's how I could describe about it, because I really couldn't even tell you exactly how she said it, but it sounds super, super exciting.
Thank you, uh, Council Hensley, Council Gregel.
Uh, Department Mike Committee Board, I I had a question for Liz. Uh, they put up a fence up there at that parking lot and they have these white deals. What is, what's that all about?
Are you talking, I'm sorry, I haven't driven by recently. So is it uh by the train part or is it on the street part?
By the train part.
So they are working on fencing there and I haven't driven by to look at it recently, but the goal eventually is to have some sort of artwork in there. But that was part of, it had to happen or that for safety reason to have that fence there. And so one of the goals is to create some art on that going forward.
Because I did see these big old white uh pieces of deals like for advertisement or something.
Yeah, so that's probably what that is, because that is, the conversation is to do some art there.
And just a reminder to speak into the microphone.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh, my committee board, I didn't get an opportunity to attend the the Recreation Advisory Board, so I don't know if the, I asked Mr. Carson.
I did, but also.
Okay, well, maybe, because I know they discussed the restroom problems we're having and stuff like that. Maybe we can uh enlighten us of it's all that stuff.
Sure. Okay, uh, Council Carson uh attended in your presence. Um, the other day, the Parks and Rec, uh, we we did talk about the restroom, had further discussion and and I believe um Andy and and Heather, they've come up with some type of a strategy that they're planning on working through in regards to um dealing with the issues that we've had with the restroom. Andy also talked about uh the increase in participation from a lot of the activities that are being put on by the um Parks and Rec's department. Uh, we had a pickleball representative come in and talk to us and give us updates on uh the volume and how they're monitoring the amount of people that come in uh for pickleball. And I also, I believe we, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to say about the new staff member yet or not, or but we we do have a new staff member there, not here today, uh, that's gonna be joining the team, which is gonna help them out in their duties and responsibilities that they have going on. Uh, Ms. Brooks were, was there as well, so I know she has a a lot more details probably than I do.
Well, just to add just a few tiny ones onto what you said, we do have um Sean scheduled for an introduction to council. He is our new John Reeser, so um, you'll be meeting him um at one of your future um council meetings. But he's jumped right in and um Andy's already having to make sure we're pacing everything. So it's a very good sign. Um, and in regards to the um Parks Bathrooms discussion, we were gonna talk about this under staff update, but it probably makes sense right now. Following the discussion at the rec board meeting, you you know, we were talking, well, if we do cameras or if you do a code or if you like, a lot of these different ways of trying to get at it and and I don't know if that was Counselor Carson or or another um rec board member, but they said, you know, we keep talking all these fancy things, but it just really seems like until you start with locking them, that should be the place to start. And it's hard to argue with that logic. Now, the devil's in the details when it comes to what time do you lock them? Who's going to do that? Because um during the summertime hours, you know, it, most people are probably using it after work, so using a regular staff person who gets off at five doesn't really work from a park bathroom perspective. And so there's a lot of talk over what hours does it make sense to leave them open um from a daylight savings perspective um to when it's during the summertime. So we're gonna look at some signage. We only have a couple more months left in this season, and so we're kinda just gonna rough it a little bit and brave it for the rest of this season. But your budget that you will see come before you for twenty twenty-four will include a part-time seasonal where most of their time would be to unlock and to lock it, but then also spend time supporting parks where they may need some other help as well type of situation. But um, we don't think it's gonna s- solve it all. Um, but definitely probably a lot more of that activity goes on when it's dark and overnight type of situation, where you don't have as much eyes potentially on it. So we feel like that should have a a big impact. Thankfully, as as Andy shared, getting the different um toilets and sinks in there that that stopped at least the damage in that perspective. So we're 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 getting at it. And Andy is still looking at the whole park adoption kinda situation as well. So maybe piecemealing this together, we can get it to where it's it's more manageable and then we'll keep keep an eye out on it. So for this year, we just got two months and and then they get closed for for the wintertime stuff. So that's what, we're not doing necessarily anything different this year other than looking into signs, making sure everything's ready to go, all of that kinda stuff. But then you'll see in your twenty twenty-four budget, a a cost to have a part-time seasonal in the parks budget um to help with the locking and unlocking.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Council Gregel?
What one suggestion uh on our one-on-one with the city manager on this was maybe putting together some kind of a pamphlet or something and going to each one of those uh households right around there. And telling them if there's some, if there's action after ten o'clock with, call the police, you know, we need their help. Uh, because I I think what's happening out there is somebody from somewhere else is coming into that area and destroying those restrooms. And now these people can't even use them because we're gonna have to lock them up. So if we can get their participation and maybe a counselor or or somebody that's in that area can go and knock on the door and say, hey, there's a pamphlet, you know, if you see some action out there, call the police. You know, any, nobody should be on there uh out there after ten o'clock or so, when it's dark, you know. So we need that, that neighborhood watch years ago, it used to work. Maybe this is something that we need to re- relook at and and go out there and and do so. But we can't do it by ourselves and the destruction is this, you know, to put a prison type of rest, you know, facilities in it, that that's wrong, you know, for community, you know, but that's, people are coming from somewhere else and destroying it. So that's something I think we need to look at.
Thank you, Council Gregel. Council Carson?
I don't, I don't disagree with Council Gregel. Um, however, we toss that around a lot and and the the reality is, is that most families or people that are using the park i- in a normal way, I guess, um are leaving it dark, you know, and so even the the additional cost during the summer of having that person run around and lock them at dark, I, it may be worth an employee getting sick, you know, some of those pictures that we saw, that that's a gruesome cleanup right there. Somebody could get poked or whatever. Um, but I think at this point, locking them, a couple signs on each bathroom is the easiest solution. It does, it does, you know, it is a drag that everybody has to pay for that, but that last effort was that was, that took some effort, that took a couple hours and that was at one, two in the morning. And if some constituent goes out there to a restroom at one or two in the morning to check on activity, they could get hurt. That's a reality. And so locking them and keeping people out at night, and in the winter, it's not really an issue. You have, it's dark at five anyway, so the uh regular employee could do that. But we did talk about that. Um, it is kinda scary to send somebody out there in the middle of the night to check on a bathroom from a neighborhood watch standpoint, but locking them will be a good solution for now.
Thank you, Council Carson, Council Hensley, and then Council Gregel.
So I agree, it's too bad that we are at this point in this day and age. I don't know if any of you use um the P O box at the post office. So I have a P O box there and they also lock their doors now. And they're closed in the evening because they were running into so many issues with people there late at night, which obviously makes adjustments, obviously, for people use, it's not twenty-four hours anymore and those type of things. So unfortunately, it's just some of the things we have to do. So it sounds like a good option, even though it's too bad.
Thank you, Council Hensley, Council Gregel.
Just a remark on uh, Councilor Carson's remarks, uh, my suggestion is not to go out there and confront anybody, especially in the dark. You see some action out there, get on the phone, call the cops. That's all, you know, you know, you're right. Somebody can get hurt if you go out there and confront somebody, especially that late at night. But you know, we need their help and I think that's the only way we're gonna solve, but it's part of the way where we're gonna solve this problem, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, Council, for the um Council uh committee reports. We're gonna go to staff announcements.
Okay, um, so the other item we covered under rec board is Andy um and his team did share a little bit of a a vision that they're looking at for um the trail, the Cole Park Trail um river activation. As he's making his way up, I did just also wanna share that yesterday, a group of us met with Senator Simpson and Representative Martinez. The um kind of impetus for it is, one, they've been extremely accessible during the last legislative se- session. They were extremely helpful on um the, all of those items that the city felt strongly about, including the housing, um, which I think meant a lot. And when we had some last minute difficulties with our grant through the Department of Housing, it was the calls from our um Senator and Representative that helped get the attention and get us back on the agenda. And so um, it's an, it's an opportunity to say thank you, but it was also to talk about trends that we're seeing in legislation and letting them meet directly with police to, how does it impact them when when something like this moves forward or with Holly from a municipal court perspective or Eric from um some of the legal items and, you know, and Rachel from a housing perspective. So it was a great opportunity and we wanted to know if they were thinking of any legislation that we could provide help with too for this upcoming session. So it was a great meeting and um greatly appreciated. So Andy, I'll turn it over to you now.
Okay, uh. So in front of you there, if you guys can see that all right, is a conceptual plan for the uh Alamosa Riverfront Project. And this is a an exciting, exciting thing. It's very conceptual and early. These aren't the pretty pictures, but this is kinda like what it, the elements that could look like um as we go to really um enable or actualize the number one goal from our department out of the comp plan, which was activate the the Rio Grande Corridor. And there's, it's still very preliminary and and the Rio Grande Headwaters Restoration Project is spearheading this and we're we're a partner on it, but they've done a lot of the grant writing, a lot of the grant seeking and just kudos to them, because they they're have some shining stars over there that are really um moving this along. So I'll talk, let's just talk a little bit about what you see up there and then I'll 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 give you an overview too, because it's not just Cole Park that it, that is part of this effort, but so we'll start in the upper left, you see a boat ramp there. Now, you know, just to clarify for the public and everyone, a boat ramp isn't you know, speedboats being dropped into Rio Grande like it used to be though, that I hear. Um, that's more, you know, our floaters and our paddlers and being able to get out. But when you combine that with the system at the North River Pavilion and the and the State Street takeout, it's probably another mile or so down to Cole Park. By the, by the farm park, there's a little beach. You see that sandy area, the north side sandbar and river access. So we have our existing pedestrian bridge. You could, families could go over there. Tucked down below there, river access improvement. So all along the park there are little rock areas that will be graduated access down to it instead of a steep on, you know, unsafe access to the river. This is really it. And what I, the beauty of the multiple locations there is it isn't just one location where maybe families would be competing. It's all along there, four or five different spots where you could easily walk down um and access the river and not necessarily fishing or boating or your uses. We're talking getting people to our lifeblood in a safe manner, right? Picnic, um, put your feet in, just like kids playing at a playground, go down and safely access the river. Um, the West Side Ditch is another part of this. Now, that's obviously not city property, but uh safe fish, fish passage and getting um more uh agricultural delivery efficiency, dealing with the West Side Ditch and boater access through there. So that's a part they're working on as well. Um, this obvi- there's an underpass under one sixty there, that's a big access uh question as we start to activate the south side and our master plan, right, the Riparian Park to Refuge. So this is now kind of also um getting our master plan implementation going. So it really ties together. Our friends at the Restoration Project wrote a little executive summary. I think it'll give you a good idea. I'm not gonna read it verbatim, but I'll give you uh just a sentence or two from it. The Al- Alamosa Riverfront Project will develop comprehensive river access, improve agricultural infrastructure at the West Side Ditch and restore aquatic and riparian habitat on the Rio Grande and Alamosa. The results of this effort will be a healthier and more resilient Rio Grande with safe community access, improved recreational opportunities, enhanced agricultural water use and water administration, restored wildlife habitat, and improved flood and drought protection. So that's another part of this is improved um flood capacity through the channel there and river shaping and some other stuff that I don't know too much about are also part of this. But um partners from the county to Division of Water Resources, um San Luis Valley Water Conservation District, San Luis Valley Great Outdoors, I'm gonna miss a few, so I'll stop there. But no, this is um an exciting project and this is the first, we're awaiting final designs and funding is already coming in for some foundation and grants and we'll keep you abreast of the the project, so. Any questions?
Yes, Council Gregel.
I didn't have a a question, but I have some comments on. You're right, uh, I sit on the San Luis Valley Water Conservancy Board. And Heather, the other Heather, Heather Dunton and her group down there, they, we're losing Emma Re- uh Reeser, John's wife, you know. She is bodying the, I don't know how many grants and on these restor- restoration projects, she's done a great, great job for us and hopefully the individual takes over, continue. But Heather does a great job down there and I'm glad to see that the city is working with them because years ago, we used to be able to to boat on that river.
Yeah.
You know, we used to go up and down on that river. And to bring it back to that stage, that that would be nice one day, you know, and we're already, we already built rant, boat ramps out there, so that's something that, you know, only adds to it eventually. So, oh, they they're, they're doing a great job down there and they'll, they'll do a great job, so.
Okay, I don't see any other vibes, but Andy, thank you for sharing this uh with us. I was excited, the uh, sorry. Oh, um, I was excited when you gave the presentation the other day. I'm even more excited now. Uh, thinking about the sandbanks, I'll get to put my foot in the sand and the water, so looking forward to it.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Alrighty. Okay, uh, Ms. Brooks, anymore?
That is it, Mayor.
Okay, that brings us to council comments. Uh, Council Hensley?
So, uh, just a couple things. So first of all, um, Council Krebs, Council Gregel, myself, we were at the ribbon cutting for the road, it's more the big road, in front of the middle school. Um, and it looks great and um I think it's fantastic. So Harry, you and your group, crew and I mean, that was, that took a lot of people um to make that happen and to get it done in time for school to start was awesome. And uh Charlie, you were real special, my, my granddaughter was very pleased that she actually got to help you cut the ribbons. So she happened to be with me. Um, then that leads into the next thing, it's back to school. So all of our K through twelve is back and it's really neat to see them and uh, wanna make sure everybody, you know, when you're driving, things like that, stay safe. And then uh, all the colleges and universities are coming back on Monday and it's great to start seeing uh everything, just a lot of energy and a lot of excitement. So just welcome back to everybody.
Thank you, Council Hensley. Council Daniel?
Can I just add, um, the Streets Division didn't even really breathe after finishing Victoria Avenue because they're already on Seventh and Alamosa. And so they've got their hands full and and really those contractors as well. So they're still out there working, just in a different place.
All right, thank you. Councilor Daniel, then Council Krebs.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanna say I had a great time at the Council.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanna say I had a great time at the Council Connection, um, with Heather, so thank you for being out there with me. It was, it was bright and it was a little warm, but it was good. Um, and so, and I thought the first Friday was really, really wonderful and. I do feel like, so having been now, I've tried all three of their little options, I feel like this is the best option for our community. Um, and I feel like we had really good, really good turnout, um. I did have, uh, the ability to work, uh, with the P D on a, not personal to me matter, but on a matter, and I just wanna say thank you. The officers were very professional, very, um. Just really wonderful, um, during that process and so it was, it was really nice. Um, and then. There will be an opportunity, I know Craig Raowolf came and talked about the Veterans Program that he's working on a couple of, um, meetings ago. And he'll be working on getting a Veterans Mental Health First Aid here for the San Luis Valley. We just completed one, um, up in La Junta. And actually Commissioner Van Rye attended, so we had a couple people, Craig attended, someone else from Valleywide attended and, um. Arlen attended, and so I just wanted to say, think, you know, thank him publicly as a commissioner for going up there and taking that, um, with us, but also. To let everyone know that we're gonna have, um, a Veterans Mental Health First Aid as well as first responder getting scheduled here soon. So we'll have at least one of each of those by the end of this calendar year and then we'll work to get a regular rotation of those.
Okay, Council Krebs.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I won't mention too much about the ribbon cutting, cause it was already spoken to, but, um, just. Kudos to the city staff that worked so hard on it and from, from what I heard came in under budget and. Under time, so, and just in time for school, so thank you for all your hard work there. Um, I just wanna give a shout out, I was at the. Um, Divide and Conquer, I was at the Beat the Heat barbecue competition this past weekend, um, helping out and. They did another, once again, a wonderful nationally recognized barbecue competition, so I just wanted to. Um, publicly give some kudos to Visit Alamosa and all their hard work. In addition to the first Fridays, they, they, um, they, they put together this every year, so, thank you.
Thank you, Council Grego.
One last comment, I, I'm glad you brought up that, that project, is now we're seeing that, that sales tax money. You know, these streets and next they're going to, uh, Washington Dishes. So hopefully, you, you know, we'll be ready there, you know, so it's been, it's been a while. For something like this to take up, to, to keep going, so I'll be on the side, I'm making sure you guys do a good job.
Yep, okay, alright, so I'll just wrap things up. Um, I'd like to thank this, the, the city's entire team and, uh, the Streets Department for, uh, Victoria Street's com- completion. I've heard a lot of positive things about that and people are happy that it was done right before school started, so that really meant a lot. Uh, thanks to all the council people who showed up, uh, to the ribbon cutting and, and staff who showed up, appreciate that and. I wanna, uh, give, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, Council Grego a round of applause for. Giving his speech and helping out as well, so thank you so very much, sir. No, you did good, thank you very much, appreciate that. And then just wanna, on a side note. From time to time in my line of work where I work, uh, I have to interact with some of the people in the businesses and, and organizations here in the valley. And, and I just have to say kudos to Ms., um, uh, Kathy Woods. It seems like every time I talk to these businesses, they tell me Kathy Woods has already talked to us about these different things that are going on. One of the greatest, uh, decisions we've made as council is to bring her on, uh, under with Heather's guidance. And you've just been doing a wonderful job and I, I can't say enough about the work that you've been providing for our city, thank you so very much. Okay, alrighty, with that, um, being said. This meeting is adjourned. But, but I was about to say adjourned in executive session, but. Alright, let, let me reverse, see how quick, they paying attention, right? Everybody's paying attention. Alright, so let's talk about the executive session, now Council Beal.
Mayor, I move that we move into executive session pursuant to C R S twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four E.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? Okay. Start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, and no further discussions will be had after we get out of exec- executive session. Yep, how, how about five minutes, everybody? So about, like, eight fifteen?